All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 7th, 2022 regular meeting of the Township of Montclair Planning Board. In accordance with the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of the municipal building and by sending a copy to the newspaper designated by the township for notices. This meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 34 and is streaming live and will be available on demand on YouTube. This meeting is a quasi-judicial proceeding, meaning the board has powers and procedures resembling of court of law, and we're obligated to objectively determine facts and draw conclusions from them in order to provide the basis of an official action. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. First up is roll call.
Vice Chair Brodak.
I'm here.
Mr. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Ian Wally?
Mr. Ian Wally's here.
What an entrance! Ms. Lockman?
Mr. Ortiz is excused. Mr. Pierre?
Present.
Counselor Schlegler?
Here.
Ms. Willis?
No, here.
Chair Nguyen is excused. Mr. Jacobson?
I'm here.
And Mr. Niemann?
Here.
Okay.
Okay, first up, we have the minutes from October 17th.
And I've received comments from Ms. Lockman and Vice Chair Brodak, changes to the minutes. Are there any additional changes?
Yes, I left after the Mad Gardner application. I was not here for the second two items, and it just would probably be good to note that.
Okay. Are there any other changes? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Obsteing.
Okay.
Yeah, I was not here at that meeting.
Next up, we have the resolution for 602 Bloomfield Avenue, Mad Gardeners.
Are there any changes to the resolution?
Yes, I was trying to find it. There's a word, the word flushed should be fleshed. Much as I would have liked to have seen this application be flushed, the word is fleshed. It was Chair Nguyen said that they, it's the part where it says Chair Nguyen, I was trying to find the paragraph.
It's half-baked.
Yeah, the half-baked, it should be flushed out. You meant fleshed. But I can't find it.
Was that in the minutes or was that in the resolution?
No, it's in the res, I believe, I don't know.
Is that regarding the security plan?
Yeah, it's not in the, is it in the minutes? Oh, yeah, you're right, it's in the minutes. I apologize. So it's back, well, probably not, even though we've approved it, probably not too late. It said that the, it's on the second, third full paragraph on page three of the minutes. Chair Nguyen stated that the project does not appear to be fully baked and that security details need to be flushed out.
Oh, okay, yep, I see it. Yep, fleshed out, not flushed. Got it.
And I did have a couple of changes I circulated for the resolution.
Okay, that's right, right. Are there any other changes to the resolution?
Move to approve as amended?
Is there, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Actually, I have to abstain too, I wasn't here.
Okay, next up is the resolution for 98 Wa Chong Avenue.
And I don't believe we received any changes to that resolution.
Well, I think I added a period somewhere, if I'm not mistaken. Quite honestly, I think I did.
Or deleted a space.
Yeah, I tend to do that as well.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as amended?
So moved.
Is a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Abstention.
As noted, I was not here for that part.
Janice, can I make suggestion that we discuss the dates of our net planning meetings next?
Absolutely.
Our minds will be involved in the other things, and we don't want to step away.
Yeah, we included a draft calendar in the packet. I don't know if anybody had a chance to review the draft calendar.
Did I circulate comments?
Keith made comments?
Doesn't he make comments of everything?
I think I do, I think I do.
I'm going to ask this question because I truly don't know the answer, and I'm just kind of, I mean, the 7:30-ness of the meetings, has thought been given to starting at seven instead of 7:30? I'm just curious as to whether anybody thinks that 7:30 is better. I mean, because we tend to go long, and the starting at seven might get us out of here before 1 a.m. on some of these days, but...
Oh, we haven't even started to go long yet.
You haven't seemed long.
No, I'm aware of long. I know what, I know what long looks like. I'm just kind of wondering whether...
The only reason we're at 7:30 is because we've always been at 7:30. That one, I think I was on, I don't think, I know I was on the board in the 2000s, and I don't think any of you were there with me, because Carol took my place. So, yeah, we always, we always met at 7:30. There's no hard and fast rule. We can certainly meet at seven, and I have no problem with that. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Doesn't matter to me.
Just back in the day, commuting more, it was tough to make seven.
Okay.
Yes. Years ago, I would have had more of an issue with seven over 7:30, but...
You know, I scooted in, I did more to seven, I scooted in, but not quite that, you know, I'm not sure what your situation is.
Well, what about John, Mr. Nguyen?
Well, that's true, I don't know John's situation either.
No, I just, I don't want to, I just wanted to, we don't have to decide now, I just kind of wanted to throw it out there.
Well, why don't we, we'll consider it at the next meeting, when John's, when John's here and everybody else.
Have we ever just thought about stopping at 11? Like, three and a half, four hours is, sometimes is exhausting.
But if we're in the middle of a, of an examination, I don't think we should, right?
Well, I mean, what I've been doing is, I mean, our bylaws, which I studied to the letter when I joined this august body, say about not starting a new witness after a certain time, and I've been, I've been kind of gigging our chair to follow that rule, and I think if we, if we do that a little more rigorously, it would probably, you know, so I suspect that, you know, if we can wrap our arms around starting a little bit earlier, and, and I agree with you, I mean, I've been really impressed at how meetings have run, both under you and under John, and I think that we really are doing a good job of it. I know that Lackawanna and some other things are going to necessarily go long, and that's what we signed up for, but I think if we, we might want to consider starting a little earlier if people are up for it, but...
It might mess with the public notice to kind of change back and forth between seven and 7:30, but when the longer applications are on, maybe that's when it makes sense to go a little earlier. I don't know if you want the public to become accustomed to one start time or not, but is that, do you think, okay, all right, I will...
No, I just think it's best.
Yeah, for it to remain consistent, yeah, okay, yeah, that seems...
Is the HPC at seven?
No, we're 7:30, we're 7:30 also, yeah.
Council's at seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why, I picked seven for a reason, because I know the council starts at seven, I thought we could...
And I'd be perfectly comfortable with seven, but, yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we have John at the next meeting and think about it?
Sounds good.
Okay, so we can, hopefully we'll also finalize the calendar at the next meeting.
Did you see anything that that's the calendar that was trouble?
Keith, I don't know, I just, I didn't check.
I think June 19th is Juneteenth, which I believe is the holiday.
So, the state recognizes it as the third Friday of June, regardless of when it actually falls. So it's not the state's recognition of Juneteenth on June 19th, because it's a Monday.
We should probably still be respectful of the actual date, yeah.
Well, we actually, I know we, it's not when Montclair is, is celebrating Juneteenth. I think it's the Friday before or the Friday after, because we went through Montclair's holiday schedule.
Oh, the state and the town are different. Is that, is that right?
I guess.
But I also believe the school district has changed theirs to the Monday. So I believe school is out that day.
Okay, well, we'll check that, because I know, I know, I know Grace checked it against the municipal calendar.
Right.
So what would be the alternative date?
Let me double-check all the dates. Okay, it's in my office, all right?
Sure.
So we'll check that date, and we'll have a discussion about moving it to 7:00 p.m.
The other one I was asking about, should we move the September 18th meeting to October 2nd, just to avoid back-to-back meetings? I know that puts three in October, but I don't know how this body feels about back-to-back meetings.
You checked with Yam Kippur and Rosh Hashanah?
No, I didn't.
Yeah.
But that might preclude that.
It might. I had, I had this on my calendar.
Okay, it didn't, it didn't cross, oh wait, we don't have the school holidays for that year yet, so, because I check it against the school holidays, and that's a good point.
Yam Kippur is October 4th.
So you'd be fine doing it on October 2nd?
October 2nd's okay, all right, so that's the suggestion, September...
No, he's not.
No.
No?
October 16th.
Oh, no, Yam Kippur is early. Rosh Hashanah is, Rosh Hashanah is the 15th. Yam Kippur is, is 24th, 25th, so you're fine.
October 3rd.
Or October, whatever.
Second, I think, is the Monday.
October 2nd, yeah.
Like I said, that puts three meetings in October, but one in September, and we're not back-to-back.
September I know is tough, and if we have to cancel a meeting in October, you know, we can do that.
That's true, that's true.
So, or have a very quick meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, next up is the council referral of ordinance O-22-27.
Okay.
Not really. Are you going to talk about Lackawanna Plaza?
No.
I know, but we need to say...
Let me just give, let me just fill you...
Isn't that next, isn't that...
No, it comes before.
Oh, yeah, it's on our paper agenda.
Oh, which is different than the electronic agenda.
Okay, we're both right. Yeah, I think I changed it electronically when I realized that we weren't going to have a substantive discussion of Lackawanna Plaza. But I'd already, we'd already sent out the packets, so that's why you have two different agendas.
I see.
But I can certainly, when I, when I prepared this, I was ready to have a discussion, anticipating that it would be introduced by the council. This is Lackawanna Plaza redevelopment plan. Unfortunately, it was not introduced, but I do believe that they're going to introduce it at their first meeting in December. So...
Is that December 6th?
December 6th, yes. So that would place this on the agenda for the planning board at the December 19th meeting. That's our first meeting after it's anticipated to be introduced.
Ho, ho, ho.
And, and I have, I have three consultants lined up to attend that meeting. We'll have Keenan Hughes, who's the planner who wrote the plan, Ira Smith, the architect who is also involved in writing the plan and coming up with the design standards, and Joe Fischinger, who's your traffic engineer, and he did review a traffic study that was prepared for the concept plan by the developer for Lackawanna Plaza, and he has some suggestions on additions and changes to the redevelopment plan to address certain traffic issues. So we will all make those available to you and have a discussion with it, with you at the meeting.
What's our authority at that meeting, Janice? Like, is, because this is coming direct from the council, correct? Doesn't it normally go from us to the council?
No.
No?
Let me take a step back.
Yeah, let's go through the whole thing.
This is under the local housing and redevelopment law, and under the local housing and redevelopment law, the council has the, or the governing body decides who prepares the redevelopment plan. Now, it can be the governing body, they can, they can author the redevelopment plan, they can authorize a redevelopment agency to prepare the redevelopment plan, or they can authorize the planning board to, to prepare the redevelopment plan. But it's a decision of the governing body, and in this instance, they wanted to take, the governing body wants to author the plan. They want it to be in their, their responsibility. So that's why, you know, it's not always, sometimes it's the planning board, sometimes it's the council, in this instance, it's the council that's taking the lead on it.
No, that's fine. I was just curious who, where the authority comes from, and then, given that, that the council is taking the lead on this, what powers do we actually have in this review process other than advisory?
That's all you have.
We just have an advisory role, so we could say, this is the worst plan we've ever seen, tear everything down, and the council can just say, no.
No, that's not even what the role is.
No, that's not exactly true.
Mr. Neese, why don't you get on the microphone and help, help us understand what's in the local housing and redevelopment law?
So, under the local redevelopment and housing law, the role of this, the role of this board is to determine whether or not the redevelopment plan is inconsistent with the master plan, and if it is, or even if it's not, the board has the ability to make recommendations about the plan. The council, when it gets your recommendations back or your conclusions back, can actually overrule it by a majority on the council, but they have to explain their reasons for doing so. That's basically what it boils down to.
And I think you all know, with redevelopment plans, you have 45 days after the council introduces it, as opposed to ordinances where it's 35 days. So, so, but it's, right now, it's, when it was on the council agenda, we posted the plan on the township website, so it's out there. I know that there are a series of public meetings that are taking place with the community and residents to talk about it. So, it's a large, it's a large plan, 115 pages, so even if we're not doing a substantive discussion tonight, at least you have a copy of it, of the thinking that, you know, the council, what the council's been thinking about. So hopefully, when it's time for the planning board to review it, you'll have time to have become familiar with it.
So, Janice...
Janice, can you work backwards and tell us when we, when, when are we expected to vote?
You're not even voting.
Well, when are we doing what Arthur said we have to do?
December 19th.
December 19th, okay, so what I would recommend is that we don't have the consultants tell us on that evening. I think it might be good for the consultants to come in far in advance of that, so we have some time to process it, because I was concerned...
But this is what I was going to ask, I mean, if, I'm just curious about, I don't, I don't even know how I feel, but I was going to ask about what's possible. So, because we now kind of know what's happening, we know that the council may or may not, you know, it's, it's expected to introduce and then refer to us on December 6th, is that far enough out that if we wanted to, we could schedule a special meeting earlier in December to hear some of those reports and then have the 19th be something a little bit more...
We wouldn't even need to do that. We would still have another meeting in January. If the schedule stands that we looked at tonight, we still would have another meeting in January, where we could discuss it within the 45 days. We'd have to bump some applications, but...
We're not voting on this on December 19th. We're voting on it 45 days after December 6th. Is that correct?
I'm just, I'm just curious as to whether, whether there is the, whether we have the ability to schedule a special meeting, that just...
We do.
I can make a suggestion.
Let's go back to my first question. When, when, I'll really rephrase it. When is the latest? Is it not 45 days from the time that it's introduced?
It's, you have to have your report within 45 days of December 6th.
So we could go to it in January.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so then if we have the consultants come in in early December, there would be some time for us to process what they tell us, as opposed to, I think it's quite difficult when we're at the meeting and we get a deluge of salesmanship and information to react in that evening.
It's not fair, yeah, it's rushed. So, I have a suggestion, okay, because the way the, our calendar works right now, we meet December 5th. Council will introduce this December 6th. I have no applications on the agenda for December 5th. Can we change that meeting to the Monday after December 5th, which would be the 12th?
12th.
And that way, we'll, I'll see, I have to confirm that they'll be available on December 12th, but that's a week before the other date.
Well, how about this? How about if we, let's keep the meeting on the 5th and have the consultants come then. It is expected that, I mean, eventually we'll have to hear what they have to say. It's expected that the council will very likely...
And we can do that too.
Yeah, that's better, I agree with you.
My concern is if, what if the council decides to change the plan? Well, why else have community meetings if not to receive input?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's fine, then, then, I think we need the 45 days. What, and I think that doing it even two weeks after is hard. So, I don't, you know, that's, I'll just say that. I think, I think that having that amount of time, there's also a redevelopment committee, which I suppose the redevelopment committee of the board would meet at some point.
Well, that was...
That's the intent.
That's my recommendation, is that the redevelopment subcommittee meets. I'm anticipating that the plan, there might be some slight adjustments to the plan before it's introduced on December 6th. If it is, then it'll be posted ahead of time, and we should, you, the planning board, would know about whatever changes are in there. I mean, language needs to be tightened, so I think that that will probably be available by then. And if the redevelopment subcommittee meets and has some suggestions, maybe we can get that language cleaned up earlier rather than waiting until after it's introduced. But I have no problem, you know, we, I can bring the consultants in for December 5th, knowing that the plan that's, since the council's going to be voting on it the next night, that it's probably largely done.
Arthur, I don't know, but I don't like that.
Then, or we can do it the week after. Let me know what you want to do, and, and I can make it happen.
I think the week after makes sense.
I would prefer after the council introduces it.
I agree.
Then that would be December 12th.
Yep.
December 12th, not the 19th.
Well, no, and then we keep the 19th.
Right, we'll keep the 19th.
Yeah, sorry.
And we'll, we'll cancel December 5th.
Right, so you're, you're moving the 5th to the 12th, we're keeping the 19th, and we have another meeting in January that's still within the 45-day window.
Right.
But December 12th is when their consultants are coming.
I can, I have to confirm, I haven't spoken to them, but that's the plan.
You didn't mention the parking consultant.
She did.
No, you didn't, the traffic. You mentioned Fischinger, but what about L V five?
I didn't, I didn't, because I don't, I haven't had the parking consultant review it, because the parking requirements are the same as in our other redevelopment plans in terms of the shared parking.
But I'm concerned, and I, I know that we're going to have our redevelopment committee look at it, but wouldn't it be a good idea perhaps to let the redevelopment committee have some hint of maybe what some of the concerns are that we might like them to look at?
Absolutely. I can, again, I can bring him in to review it, that's not a problem.
No, I'm speaking of, you, we...
Can you speak into the microphone?
I thought I, it's lit up.
There you go.
Maybe this helps, okay, sorry, guys. No, I was just saying that my understanding is that the board has a redevelopment committee that was going to look at it and make some recommendations to our, to the whole planning board, and might be an opportunity to hint to, to that board, some of the things that they may, we may want them to look at.
Want who to look at?
Our, our subcommittee.
Also, you know, along these lines, just in terms of...
There are a couple of things that I see in there that concern me, and I thought might be good to see.
Absolutely, let me know, and I...
Is that something, Mr. Neese, that individual board members can send just to Janice? Any things they, any things that they would like the subcommittee to look at in particular about this plan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Send it to me, and I'll, and I'll, I set it up so I can bring him in to answer certain questions. I think if it's targeted, that's even better.
Janice, just in terms of rules, since Keith brought it up, there is no prohibition against us talking amongst ourselves about this, because it's not an application, correct? So we can talk, five of us can talk together, three of us can talk together, whatever.
Well, I think the problem...
No, but I'm just, I'm exaggerating.
Five is a meeting, as long as...
Yeah. Three's the max.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
But if it's, that's why we keep our subcommittees at three. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's why we wouldn't circulate comments, like, if I had a comment on the plan, I wouldn't send it to everybody, because that could be conceived as a, as a meeting.
I have a question about process, and this may not be allowed, but when, we've, we've
got these ordinances, like the impervious coverage ordinance, the redevelopment plan, we have a zoning committee, which is really good, because it also meets with the zoning board, and the zoning board knows the zoning code far better than, than we do. So when these things are being cooked up, even if they're being cooked up by council, why don't members of our committee take part proactively when these things are being created? Because then, especially with the, I felt like with the last ordinance with respect to impervious coverage...
The impervious coverage.
If we were at that table, it would have saved a lot of time, and the same logic goes to creating a redevelopment plan. So if we have these committees that are knowledgeable, I think to get out in front before they come to the planning board, I'm not sure if that's legal, but from a process standpoint, it seems to be a lot more efficient, because it feels like we play catch-up.
Yeah. Yep.
I think it'd be up to the council.
I mean, at one time...
Again, that's a council decision.
At one time, planning board people did go to the EDC meeting, and that doesn't happen anymore. I don't know why.
Well, it's always, people come to the EDC meetings on, on invitation only, when they're, when they're requested to attend, and I think it's been like that for years now.
Yeah.
Well, Jason DeSalvo used to be a regular attendee at, at those meetings. Jason DeSalvo was a regular attendee at those meetings, and he's the planning board person, yeah.
I think that was when, that, I think what you're talking about was when we were working on the Seymour, Seymour Street redevelopment plan, and he didn't come to a lot of meetings, but I was meeting with this redevelopment subcommittee of the planning board, who was charged with doing the redevelopment plan, and then I would meet with the EDC, and there was a lot of back and forth, and sometimes we were able to meet together. That was a little bit of a different creature in terms of process.
Do you know why the council did not have the planning board do this redevelopment plan? I know they're, it's within their purview, but why? I mean, we did a great job, I think, on Seymour Street. I don't know why.
Height, I think that, you know, the elephant in the room is, there's 87-foot buildings that are proposed.
Nine-story buildings, two, seven stories.
So, I mean, we can discuss this.
Plus machinery on top, yeah.
So, this is something that, for example, if the redevelopment committee did meet, it would be good to know, you know, how we feel. I know that the redevelopment plan was accepted from the C1, you know, the C1 limitations that we've tried for and so forth, but I think the board generally has been pretty consistent about height being a factor, so, you know, that's one reason why we may be excluded, because there's a thought that maybe we have...
We have a bias towards lower buildings.
We have a bias toward, toward the height. I presume that.
We were aggressive at Elm Street, at 11 Elm Street, and they probably, you know, that impacts the traffic for this as well, so, you know...
And the potential sale of the station there, the Shell Station, that could be a six-story building as well.
Yeah. Now, and also, HPC, I think the Historic Preservation Commission, right, would have been, are they, what's their, are any subcommittees going to be reviewing in advance of the introduction on December 6th?
I don't know. The, the HPC can, first of all, number one, there is no statutory involvement of the HPC in redevelopment plans, but we know that this is an important...
Absolutely.
...property. So that's why I mentioned to the HPC that I, I mean, to the EDC, the Economic Development Committee, that I thought we should make a presentation to the HPC so that you guys can, the HPC can understand what's going on, because I know the HPC's going to want to make a report, right?
This is an historic train station.
And we want to hear the report.
It has to be involved. I don't, yeah, and actually, council, a counselor, will the council be involving HPC subcommittees or, or the planning board subcommittees? Do you have any?
No, not that I know of.
Not that you know of. Can we make that recommendation as our liaison? Would you be willing to make that recommendation?
Yes, I would. I will bring it to the council.
Thank you.
So, I anticipate a report from the HPC, so we'll make the presentation to explain the plan, and focusing on a lot of the architectural details, Ira Smith will be there. So you can, we can help in the process.
Yep.
So, I anticipate there'll be a report from the HPC to the council, and you'll have the, the report from the planning board. We're getting those things in motion.
And HPC will review the site plan when it comes in as well.
Sure, but with, again, limited authority.
Yeah.
Hey, Janice, I have a question for you. You had mentioned that there are community meetings going on. The only ones that I'm aware of is Mr. Cummings had a meeting last Thursday, and he's having one this Thursday. Is anybody else, anybody other counselors having meetings?
I think there will be some other meetings that are in the works. I don't have any, you know, actual dates confirmed yet, but I think there will be some additional meetings coming from members of the council.
Yes.
And how do we hear about those meetings if we wanted to attend and hear the community concerns?
I think they'll be widely advertised, and they'll be out there. I don't know of any dates. I've heard rumors.
I've heard rumors too.[1796.91]
I've heard rumors too.
A little rumbling that, that there's, I've heard of one other meeting, but nobody has, I don't have, I haven't heard a date or, or which councillor is even hosting that meeting, so.
I, I heard those rumors too. I could tell you that information, but it's not confirmed, so.
But, but nothing's been said. But I'm sure as soon as it is, we'll all hear about it.
Yeah, yeah.
On social media or website.
So, that's what I'm concerned about, yeah.
If you'd like, I can let the planning board members know of the meeting dates.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, it was very informative to go to Mr. Cummings's meeting and to hear the crowd reaction, yeah.
Although, all we did was listen to questions.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the questions that were generated, clearly, they were good.
Very well-run meeting.
It was.
Yeah.
People paying attention.
They were paying attention, yeah.
So.
So, I, I have a question for Mr. Nice. The previous plan for Lackawanna, I, we have, we had a lawsuit that was brought against us, which is still open, that's my understanding. I particularly, as a council person, having two hats, I voted on one thing and another thing. I was named in the lawsuit. Do you think I should be part of this, the, the proceedings that are going to happen here on the planning board? Since, since the council is giving this to the planning board, should I have input on it?
You are a member of this board, and therefore you have the right to speak.
Let's make sure this is, your microphone on?
Sorry. Somebody, somebody said that you were in a conflict position, if my recollection is-
Yeah, that's, I recently read it. It was a conflict.
But I don't know what the, I don't, I'm sorry.
No, I think it's because you passed a resolution on the council to expedite the study. And you voted on that, and then you recused yourself from the actual vote at Lackawanna.
That's exactly right.
You did that on a recommendation of council, right?
I did. I did.
Dennis Galvin said you should not.
Right.
But what was the basis for the, for you not doing that?
Not doing what? I don't understand.
For not voting. Well, it's exactly what Carmel just said. It's because I voted yes on the resolution to bring it here, to expedite it, so it made it look like I was approving the plan.
Yeah, tainted. Your vote was kind of tainted because you had a bias, yeah, yeah.
And it was very upsetting to me, having sat through over a year of testimony and a year of presentations, and I wasn't able to participate in the vote. So, I just wanted to make sure that by sitting here, over the next forty-five day, you know, those forty-five days,
period.
It doesn't-
You're not in the same position, I think, yeah.
Or exclude me from, from future votes.
Well, there is, as far as I know, there's nothing before the council that says, yeah, move it along, move it along, the way that was that resolution that, that they voted on.
Right.
Look, at this point, my belief is that you will be fine because you're, even though you're a member of the council and you sit at this board, you'll be fine. I'll speak with Dennis and, and I'll speak with, with Paul. And I'll confirm that before you actually have to sit.
That would be very helpful.
And I'll be back with you.
I don't want to put this board in jeopardy or the council or myself, so.
Of course.
Very good. Thank you.
Now, I know you were very upset by that.
I was, yeah, yeah. So, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Is that litigation anywhere near being closed?
Building soul is still fighting. I never-
Arthur, you don't really know because you're not, you're conflicted.
What, where it is? Oh, I know, I know where it is. It's sitting in the appellate court.
Yeah, yeah.
And there is no intention on the part of the, on the part of the respondents, the appellate, where the people-
To drop it, yeah.
And, but there is no intention on the part of the respondents to terminate the appeal. The way I understand it, and I can just share it with you, the way I understand it is that Mr. Plasek, who is now the appellee in the case, figures, well, I already have approvals. I have a set of approvals that this, this board gave him.
Yep.
I'm not giving that up so quick.
Right.
So, while his counsel believe that the Judge Lineout decision will be affirmed on appeal, he's not going to withdraw the appeal or not take any steps to get rid of it.
Yeah.
Has it been argued to be active?
No.
I thought it was. I thought it was argued and we're waiting for the judges to read everything and make a decision.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I thought everything was done and the judges are just reviewing things and ready to make a decision.
As far as I know, the briefing is completed.
Yeah.
But, as you, as you know, Jeff, you can get a, a message saying, oh, we're having argument next week, so come on down. That kind of thing. As far as I know, there's not been oral argument on it as yet.
But he's no longer the, it's a new owner, so he still has the right to the old decision, even though there's a different plan now with the farm or apartments. I'm a little confused as to how he, who, the, the people who bought the suit no longer own the, the plaza. They sold to Plasek, right?
But the, the site plan runs with the land.
Yeah, he stepped into the shoes of-
The site plan approval runs with the land, so it's still valid.
Right.
So, the old thing is still valid and he would like to win that as a safe, what he wants now is quite different.
He just wants that in his back pocket should, should it be necessary. If, if he loses the appeal, or if the appeal goes in favor and Judge Lineout's decision is reversed, he still comes back and he still has the new site plan that they can bring on.
Oh, okay.
But if he lose, you know, if he wins, he's got that in his back pocket. It's, it's like insurance, basically, for him.
It's a paid policy. It's an already paid policy.
Been paid and then some.
Well, it is a, it is a factor. I mean, that is, that's a very real, it's a very real factor, so.
That's very interesting.
I'd probably see a copy of that plan if we're looking at a plan that we could theoretically have as a matter of right.
We voted on it.
The one that was passed, that we as a board-
Yeah, that's the one we passed, yeah.
Well, is there a copy around?
Well, I'm sure it's somewhere. The resolution is-
Are you talking about the draft redevelopment?
Well, we were, the discussion was that Mr. Plasek has, if he wins, he will have a plan that he can have in his back pocket.
Right.
So, with that in his back pocket and this redevelopment plan that we're considering, we should consider this new plan in comparison to the back pocket plan. You follow me?
You mean that the site plan approval?
Yeah, because logically, if we-
He wants, he wants this plan.
But, let's be clear, this redevelopment plan.
This one, the one that you folks are going to-
Compared to the site plan that was approved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just want to make sure we're distinguishing redevelopment plan from site plan.
My, if you, stay with me, please. We should have a copy of that plan. If you're, if we're evaluating, evaluating this, and if we're too needy or we want too much from this, knowing what the fallback position is, is a valuable piece of information for us to have.
I get you, yeah.
So, we should probably know what that height, density, and-
We do know that, though. That was what we voted on.
Well, I don't, and, and I don't have a copy of the plan, so all I'm saying is if we had a copy of the plan-
You recused yourself, that's right. You recused yourself from those, correct?
But even if I did, now who knows where the plan is? I don't save copies of the plan. So, if there was a copy of the plan, and if it is a back pocket issue, I think it's appropriate that we have copies of it.
I mean, we, we have digital copies of the-
That would be great. That's all, that's all I'm asking. Just to know that that is something-
It's a hundred and fifty-four units versus three seventy-five.
Yeah.
So, it's a far different plan, the new plan, than what, what we approved way back when.
What was the height on that old plan?
Four stories.
Yeah.
Four stories.
Four stories versus six.
Yep.
And there were, what, two buildings?
Janice, you keep saying six. It's a lot more than six stories on the redevelopment plan.
Well, they call it six, but they say it's six to eight, 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 seven, eight stories.
The maximum height in the redevelopment plan is six stories.
Six stories defined as ninety-seven feet.
Yeah, but what they want to do is double stories.
Eighty-seven feet, but it's six.
I'm sorry, not eighty-seven.
If you're talking stories, it's six stories.
Then maybe we should talk feet, because six stories is generally not considered eighty-seven feet.
Height is two things. It's stories and it's feet. So, our zoning ordinance is six stories and sixty-seven feet. This is six stories and eighty-seven feet. Okay? That's why I understand you have these questions and we'll bring in the, Keenan and Ira to explain how it's applied. I went through it a little bit at the public hearing, not the public hearing, at the public meeting, community meeting, where we have different heights and different setbacks and setbacks from every single vantage point around every single building, because it really was carved down with trying to reduce the volume and massing. So, that's where you really want to delve deeply into what's being proposed. We'll go through that.
Oh, I have one other question, but I want to comment. In this day and age with technology and using three D modeling, the graphics that are in the redevelopment plan are extraordinarily hard to extract a visual from. So, and that can be done deliberately when people don't want you to see impact, so.
But also, remember, this is, this is-
Let me finish, please.
It's not a, it's a concept plan. It's not even a concept plan. It's a, it's, it's not a concept plan. It's not a site plan.
There are massings of buildings that are verbally described with setbacks, heights. Everything is on the plan that we should understand. Seeing that information in this day and age in a three D model is a world better than, you know, is incredibly better than looking at this flat plan where you have to visualize what setbacks are at certain heights, and there's no, and there's nothing, and I think that we deserve to have a three D model built of what this redevelopment plan-
See, let me, let me explain, let me respond.
If they did have a three D model, it got wet.
Tony?
It got wet.
Yeah, Tony?
Hang on. Let's let Ms. Tally, let's let Ms. Tally respond.
They have a three D model, okay, of their concept plan. It's not a massing plan. It's a three D model of their concept plan. And it was presented to the Economic Development Committee.
I saw it.
They do not want to give it to us. I have asked to have it, you know, presented as part of the redevelopment plan. They said, you know, they didn't want to make that, make it available. We've asked again. I've since heard that it was destroyed in, in a flood in the, their space in that building over on Walnut Street, where they have office space. So, I'll reach out to them again.
It's not a physical plan. I mean, digitally, this, for example, this page here where you've got the A, Bs, and Cs, and there's building envelopes, and there's a lot of information in a flat plane. This can easily be created digitally in a three D model that could be projected, and we could really understand the massing a hundred times better.
Yeah.
And I think that we should make that a requirement. And not of their, not of the plan that they want to build, but what this redevelopment plan allows.
I'll, I'll give them-
And seeing that, I think would be good information.
I'll give, I'll-
And it would make our job so much easier.
I agree.
I, I think that Ira is going to give us that.
I didn't hear what you said.
I think Ira Smith is going to give us a three D plan.
No, God, no. It's not in the, he has no budget for that.
I don't mean a model. I mean a digital, what, what Tony was talking about.
No.
I don't think that's part of the, is per view, yeah.
This is, the three D model is, is their obligation to provide to us.
Their architects made it.
Yeah, so they provided it before.
But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a digital, like you were talking about a digital.
No, what Tony was saying was a three D model.
Initially, we're talking about the three D live model, but then Tony, I think you were talking about a digital version that gives you the-
You can do something in Revit, which is not Revit, which is not very difficult. All I'm saying is that for a hundred and four pages, the expense that went through, the incredible detail of that entire architectural tome that's at the back, if we're talking about cost, some of the costs that went into that probably, it would be far more worthwhile to know what the massing of these buildings are going to look like visually.
And I will reach out to the applicant.
Because that's something that's going to be super important to the neighborhood, and to have it presented this way, there's too much information to process to really figure out what these buildings are going to look like.
And I, I, I agree, and that's why we had the three D, the physical three D model showing the massing. And I'll ask for them to provide it again. They've been reluctant because they want this to, to, to focus on the overall planning objectives and not on the concept plan or their site plan.
But the concept plan reflects what is on this plan.
Exactly. So, I will reach out to them again and, and ask if we can bring it to you, okay? I had asked originally. They provided it.
They did.
Because I said I didn't want to go forward without it, and we provided it to the E D C. I think we should provide it to the planning board.
Let me ask you, are there pictures of it? I mean, you said it was damaged, or they said it was damaged. Is there any pictures, at least we could see?
Pictures are not going to do it justice because it was eight feet long.
It's better than nothing.
And it was, it was all white.
You would, you would lose it.
It was all white, so it, I don't think a photo or, it would be hard to see.
They did, they did all the way up to beyond Seymour Street, all the way down to Maple Avenue. So, you kind of lose the, what's, the impact of the massing because it's integrated into such a big area. I'll reach out to them again.
That's so much more helpful to understand in the concept than it is to read it, so tell them if-
For sure.
I don't understand their, their reasoning for not providing it.
We didn't have, we can, I'll ask for it again. We didn't have it for the, for Seymour Street. At the, we had it for the site plan, not for the, we didn't have it for the, for the redevelopment plan. We had it for the site plan.
We didn't, but yeah.
Did they build one for Seymour Street?
They built one for this when they came in with the site plan.
For Seymour, and they, and they didn't provide it for Seymour Street?
Not for the redevelopment plan. They only provided it for, when they came in with their site plan. That's when we had the three D model. So, it's a little bit different because we didn't have it before. We tried, we worked really hard to provide the graphics and the details in this redevelopment plan to ensure that what we get has all the, carves the building on all sides so it integrates into the community, which is kind of difficult to do. I mean, this is form-based code. So, again, you don't always get a three D model as part of this.
I disagree. I just think that, I, I, please excuse my criticism. A three D model is so much better. I'm looking at this plan on page twenty-seven. Setback at, you know, setback one, setback two, setback five, setback at twenty-five feet, forty-five feet, all the way through maximum height eighty-six feet. To process this information visually in a flat plan, you have to be really good at interpreting plans. So, regardless, I think that if we are to, and if one of the concerns is the massing of these buildings, there should be no reason why a digital representation of what this looks like in three D shouldn't be provided. I, I almost, almost refuse to even consider that. I mean, it's such a simple thing. It doesn't have to be a physical model that's-
I don't think it's quite that simple, Aunt Tony. It really isn't.
Well-
Having, you know, honestly, having spent the past six weeks working almost full-time on the details on this plan, it's not that simple.
So, you're saying that on page twenty-seven, to put these forms, they're, they're essentially a bunch of rectangles with setbacks and heights, to represent that digitally is almost impossible. It's all defined. Everything is defined here.
It is.
Yeah, so representing that digitally is not that hard.
But I don't have, I don't have the budget.
No, no, Janice, he's not saying for you to do it. He's saying why-
They do.
Oh, Janice, I don't think Tony's saying, why aren't you, why aren't you doing it?
No, no, I'm not saying you, no.
I think Tony's saying, why isn't, why isn't, why aren't we, why, no, no, I think with Tony's-
They have to release it to us.
Not you, not you. I think, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying that the developer should be providing this, yes?
My point is that we have a hundred and seven pages to get to. A hundred pages of architectural, beautiful architectural-
I don't think anyone's disagreeing with you.
You should do that, Janice. No, no chance, no way.
I haven't heard anyone disagree with you. I just, there's a couple of points on this. One, this is a plan coming from the council, so it's, it's, I presume funded by township dollars. And there's a, there's a budget associated with it. There's presumably is a, some sort of contract document that says this is what will be produced. I don't know if, what you're asking for, while I think it makes a ton of sense, I don't know if it's in the budget.
If that would have been a good, see, that's, if, if we, on the redevelopment committee, were at the meetings where this plan was being produced, yours truly would have said, would you mind showing this? And don't spend all that much money doing it. Do it very simply. Because we know that there have been issues in this neighborhood about height.
We, you know, we asked for that. They prepared it. They provided it. We saw it. Evidently, it's been destroyed. All I can say is I can go back and ask them to do it again. But, because I agree with you, and that was, that was the message we gave to them. You, you, it's very hard to visualize. Do a three D model. They did it.
Are we talking about the same thing, though? I think Tony's now talking about, you know, you're talking about a digital, not a hard copy, not a-
You can spin, you can put it in Google Earth. You can spin it around. It's so cool. You can see it relative to all these issues.
Digitally, you're talking about, right, Tony? I don't think Tony's talking about another full model, Janice. I think we're talking-
Can I just quickly?
Well, I'll take one, yeah. I think we're talking about two different things, though.
Oh, I said, I mean, I prefer the 3D model because I think that the, the, the digital ones can be skewed.
Yeah.
Hey, guys, time out a second. I ran for council 10 years ago, and I lost to a guy named Spiller. Right? If I'd won, I would have had the ability to have a say in this kind of stuff. I lost. This is, as, as our acting chair just said, this is coming from the council. If the council really wants us to get into this, then we need all the things that, that Tony and you are saying, and, you know, we can't provide useful comments to the council if we don't have these things. The council, however, doesn't necessarily want to have that kind of input from the planning board. And I would ask Councilor Schleger, when this goes to the council, if the council wants the planning board to do this kind of thing, then I think you can report to them that we had a robust discussion at which it was, it was a fairly consistent comment from the, from, from the planning board, that it would be very helpful to us if we have, if the developer were to be able to give us an appropriate 3D rendering so we can see these buildings, and it would also aid in public comment. If, on the other hand, the council doesn't care, and they don't have to, then they can, you know, they can ram it through and they can have the political accountability for it. I mean, it's all, it's all up to them.
But that's the point, Mr. Jacobson.
You're running the show.
That's the point. They have the ability to say.
Absolutely.
Too bad. But we also have the ability to ask, and I think that we should ask for whatever we want.
I'm 100% with you. I just wanted, I just kind of wanted to, from the Department of the Incredibly Obvious.
Right. But no, no, but we, we haven't, we haven't yet, we haven't yet had agreement that this is what we want to ask for. And frankly, look, i- if they're going to give us the opportunity to review this, let's ask for what we want and do it right. So I agree with you, Mr. Jacobson, they could tell us, you know, no. But right now, that we should all come to some kind of agreement of what we want to ask them for, and we should just go for it and ask what we want to ask. And they can do whatever they want with their own authority. I'm very big on authority, I agree with you. Let's use ours to the greatest extent that we can.
And I have heard your comments, those are clear.
Yes.
And well, did I mention, did I mention a 3D rendering, Ms. Tally? I don't know.
The next council meeting is next Monday, November 14th, because of Election Day and the, um, League, League of Municipalities Conference. So we meet next Monday, the 14th. I will ask the council at that meeting, um, and, and we'll see what they say.
Yeah.
And, and I guess it would, I would be asking them for some budget money, for first that they would like the 3D.
No, I think what we're going to do is we.
And do you need budget money to have it produced?
Let me first reach out to the developer.
Okay.
Okay, because, and, and, and let them know what I'm hearing.
Fine.
Okay? And find out what the real story is, okay?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Okay.
I would imagine we must have this. You don't think so?
Maybe they have flood insurance, they could rebuild it.
There you go. Yeah, I think that's the first step.
It's not that badly damaged either, that.
Anybody want to talk about ADUs?
Yeah.
And if, and if that's not, you know, if, if we don't get a positive, like, yes, we'll do that, then I think perhaps the question would be, is there additional funding available such that one of the township experts could do the similar thing?
Exact, okay.
Also, it would be part of our recommendation when we comment as the planning board.
Correct.
That, you know, we should have had a 3D model because it's very hard to digest.
It'll be part of our official recommendation, I would imagine.
And then they would have to respond to that if they decline, so.
Given, given the discussion tonight, I think that will happen.
Well, they, they've known because we asked for it over the summer.
Right.
It was always given that we wanted the 3D model, so.
Uh, two more, two more quick questions on this before we study it. What is being preserved of the train station in this plan, besides the waiting room?
The waiting room, well, we can talk, I'd rather talk about that.
Well, just real simple, just.
I doubt it's a simple, I don't think it's a simple answer.
Well, Building A, is Building A the train station where they demolish the train station?
No, the, the waiting room is being preserved, the terminal shed, I don't know, I don't have it in front of me.
I, I think that's, those are good questions for when the consultants come in and present and get into the detail.
My second question is, this is also simple. Where is the parking? I presume it's underneath all the other buildings, B, D, and E, is that?
No, no.
No.
First floor, no.
It's in parking decks, underneath the buildings, yes.
Underneath the buildings, okay. For the supermarket, that's, two simple questions.
How many levels is it parking?
For the supermarket?
Again, that's a, that's a site plan issue. I don't have the levels for, at this point.
Well, I'll, you know, since we're going this far. Because, you know, I started the meeting very politely.
I know Mr. Jacobson wanted to move on to ADUs.
Which is really safe, so.
Yeah, right.
Since you mentioned the parking thing, if you looked at page 19, the, the plan, I think that's the same one that, that Tony has up.
I don't have.
The supermarket is supposed to be kind of the very important part of it. It's something we're trying to promote. It's one of the things we said, that it's a food desert and it's really important to ourselves, you know, of the three Ps, which is, you know, what.
Where is it on the plan? Is it demolished?
Yeah. There is nothing that shows you that, but if you look at the plan, it shows the exits to the supermarket, right? They mentioned that the reason why they felt that the, um, path mark wasn't successful is because you couldn't see it. So they've made this so that you can see it. Building A is where the supermarket's going to be. But there is no access to it for parking, so you cannot see the parking at all. From Bloomfield Avenue, they said there will be no Bloomfield Avenue exit to it, right, entrance to it, so that you can see it and drive by, but there's no clear for somebody who wants to shop there, view that they can park there. And if you look at it, the parking deck is evidently going to be in back. And if you look at the arrows they're showing, well, their entrances, there's only one entrance in the front. All the other buildings have several entrances. There's only one entrance to the grocery store, it's in the front.
It, there's actually two. There's an entrance from Glen Ridge Avenue and a.
Well, they don't show it.
No, it is there.
Well, I, this is probably a good discussion for.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, is that the parking for the supermarket is going to be very important because the supermarket needs a place for corrals, for shopping carts, and they certainly can't take a parking deck and come, park a car and come downstairs and then do all of that and have no place, ride an elevator with a sho, shopping cart. There's nothing here that shows where the entrance is that people have come to the parking lot.
And remember, this is not, this is not a, a site plan.
It, it's not, but they show the arrows on here for everything else. And they show you nothing about the parking for the, it looks like there's no entrance.
And that's a site plan issue. Seriously, that's a site plan issue. And we can, we can talk about it with, you know, with the redevelopment subcommittee when we have the presentation, but, you know, the parking specifics like that are really site plan issues.
Yeah, but I mean, I know you say that, but.
The massing is being defined by this plan. I think Carol makes a good point. This plan is very defined, where Building A is, B, and C.
And it also shows you where the entrances are, but it doesn't show you anything that connects parking to that building at all.
But again, that's a site plan issue. We don't have that level of detail in the site plan.
No, I disagree.
I mean, in the redevelopment plan.
I mean, there's enough detail there, it's showing where the, it's showing each use of each one of these buildings.
It's showing you arrows as to where people can go and where they can't go, and it, it does, it does show, but it, it shows nothing that makes that look as though it's a priority, that supermarket is a priority of this plan at all.
Okay.
And Janice, you keep saying it's not a site plan, but it's the basis. It came from the developer, and this is what he wants to build.
You as the planning board have to separate site plan issues and site plan details from redevelopment plan details. And items like exactly where the parking is and where the, and the parking, though, this is, this is a general approach. Those kinds of details are site plan details, okay? We don't have that level of detail in a redevelopment plan.
I disagree again. I think that this plan.
I, I disagree as well, but I'm not going to.
We're going to have up to three meetings to discuss this, and so I'd, I'd like to move on if we can.
Yeah, can we just finalize the dates so we're all squared away on what dates are doing what?
December 12th, December 19th.
Yep.
Right, December, so we're going to try, we're going to move our December 5th meeting to December 12th. Ms. Tally is going to ask if the consultants are available that night to present to us.
Right.
And you're going to let us know if there's any community meetings that happen in the meantime?
Correct, but let's, but let's stay on, hang on, you asked about the, the meeting dates, so let me just stay there. So the 12th, December 19th, and then January 9th.
January 9th?
Correct.
Okay. And in terms of the redevelopment subcommittee will be looking at this, what do you need from them and when do you need it?
It'd be nice to have their preliminary thoughts on the redevelopment plan.
Yeah.
And, I don't know, Ms. Tally, should they have it by the 12th or the 19th? I guess it depends on if the consultants are available on the 12th.
So when you're doing your scheduling, when you meet with the consultants or talk to them and you plan out the calendar, can you please say when the redevelopment subcommittee would have to have our thoughts to the planning board? So that we have a timeframe.
I think you have, you should probably try and have it by the, by the 12th.
The 12th, okay.
Make the most sense. Because even if the consultants can't come in on the 12th, we could start this process, continue the process, however you want to look at it, and have the redevelopment subcommittee give their report.
Right. Okay? And just one more thing, the 45 days ends at, um, uh, January 9th, if it's introduced at the next.
You'd have to have your report by, I, I don't have the date in front of me.
Yeah.
But you'd have to have your report done by January 9th.
Okay.
Because we don't have a date, a planning board meeting after that.
Mm-hmm. And the holidays are all in between and all of that, so.
Okay?
All right. Council, sorry, Council Referral Ordinance O2227.
Um, so, I know this was a hefty, um, package on housing and accessory dwelling units that was sent out to you, but we've been working on this ordinance for 10 years now. And it's been in the last two years that I think there's been a solid support for this ordinance. The Working Committee was established and spent a lot of time drafting it. And then the two council members who were on that committee went back to their fellow council members and made changes.
There are three council members on the committee.
Okay.
Russo, Price, and Yacabellus.
Yep. And made changes to it. So, um, what you have tonight is the result of a lot of work by a lot of different people. I have to say, I was amazed and, and just very happy that this ordinance, when introduced by the council, was approved unanimously. So it was introduced, it was approved, I know that we, but they went back and they made some changes to it and reintroduced it. Uh, that's what you, I think the red line version in what you have today are the changes that were made upon reintroduction. But again, it was, it was unanimous. So it's been referred to you, um, for consideration of consistency with the master plan, and you have 35 days to report. So I don't know how else more you want me to talk about this. I know Carmel was intimately familiar with the process and was very much involved. She was a member of the, uh, the Working Committee as well.
Yeah, the people on the Working Committee were not just community people, they were kind of experts. I won't call myself an expert, I'll call Janice an expert, she was on the committee. But experts with expert interest in affordable housing issues and senior issues. Um, I don't, do you want me to, Anne Lappel, Frank Millsbaugh, the three council members, Russo, Yacabellus, and Price Abrams. Wendy McNeil, she was a housing commissioner at one time.
Harold Simon.
Harold, Harold Simon is, you know, the affordable housing guru. So, and we spent, this is actually, in my view, this is how ordinances should be handled, where you have a group of experts, or we call ourselves experts, who work on stuff, look at all the issues, and debate back and forth how this thing should read, and then come to a final draft after a lot of consideration, a lot of thought. And, um, you know, compared to some of the things that get through council that have no research or done, but anyway, I won't go there because I'm a, not a fan of how they do rent control, and I'll say that, that that was not done in the kind of expert, kind of plotting manner that this was done. But anyway, um, so I did look at the master plan, and I think, um, this adheres to the objective of the master plan. If you look at page six, the Township Goals 1 and 4, it's, I mean, I don't know if you want me to read them, or you have master plans in front of you. The, uh, page seven of the master plan, it meets other objectives. Then page 46, it meets those objectives. So I think there's many, much support in the master plan for this, this ordinance. And I, you know, I was just thinking about this, and, um, you know, affordable housing is a real issue in town, but, and I think that, you know, we approve projects where we build these cubes that, that store your stuff, you know? Then we have garages that store stuff. We have prisons that store criminals. We have graveyards that store bodies. And yet we cannot have, but we cannot have, we don't have housing for people. So this, I believe, is a modest way to have, um, a, you know, modest kind of housing for families. And it started out being really for senior citizens who wanted to age in place. And then it kind of turned into affordable housing issue as well. But that was the real driver behind this, was that people have their elderly parents who want to keep their houses in Montclair. They don't want to move, that's a hard thing to do when you're an elderly person and you have to move to a new place, it's expensive. If you look at what it costs to keep someone in assisted living place, it's like $5,000 a month. That's the cheapest. Um, I know this from, you know, having an elderly parent. So, um, as I said, this is a modest way to get some housing in town. We carefully looked at how these units will fit into the neighborhood, that was a big issue with us. We didn't want things that would be out of character with the town. Um, there, I mean, I don't know if you, you read this stuff, if you have any questions, Janice and I can clearly talk about them, but I'm for it. In other words.
I think the key thing is, um, we have, you probably are familiar, we do have an ordinance on the books. It's got a lot of, lot of restrictions that are really disincentives for people to create these accessory dwelling units. And the way to think about it is, it's not a second dwelling unit, it's not a, taking a one-family house and making it a two-family house. The reason it's called an accessory dwelling unit is because it comes with reasonable restrictions that make it secondary to the primary dwelling unit. It's smaller, it must be hidden, so, and it's really, um, again, considered an accessory use to the primary use of the property, which would be either a single family or a two-family or a three-family property. And this is just an accessory use to have a small dwelling unit. Limited in size, limited in capacity, and with a lot of restrictions in terms of its appearance, uh, so that it allows flexibilities for, for various households who need additional living space or rental income.
I had just one question. And, uh, I was wondering, it, it says it's appropriate for attics or third floors or, and basements. I was wondering, is, is that typically just 40% of a house, a basement or whatever? I thought it was more like 50.
It can be either. It could be.
Because I noticed that it said that, I was thinking about if you had a small house, and it says that you, you cannot have more than 40% of it being this, this, um, affordable unit. I was wondering if that is not, maybe not necessary to say that a small house could only have 40%. I understand that where it says it can't be more than 800 feet, but in a small house, it might be not much, if you say you can't go with 40%. Maybe they couldn't use their basement, or they couldn't use their...
Well, if a small house is 1,500 square feet, right? And 40%, that gives you 800 square feet. I mean, I think it's, I think the math works. A small house is, 40% of a small house would give you about...
I was just asking, that's why I asked the question. Is that typical, it says you can use a basement or an attic type thing, I'm saying, is that typically 40% or is it typically more than 40%? That's the only question I ask.
Depends on the house.
It depends on the house, yeah.
Right, and I was thinking that a small house, a small, I've seen houses that are fairly small, and I was wondering if saying that it couldn't be more than 40%, wouldn't it be just sufficient to say that it couldn't be more than 800 feet?
Well, then, I think then you lose the relationship of, you know, that's why we had it, because it has to be accessory to the primary dwelling.
Right.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't take a small, one-family house and allow another unit that's approximately the same size and make it become a...
If it's the basement, it wouldn't really make that much difference, was my thinking. But I'm not going to push it, because I think the ordinance is very good, and I don't think that I have to really, you know, go through this. But I just wondered, I saw that, I just wondered if 40% was typically going to allow that house to use its basement or not.
So is this, is this one where we're just, or it's an exercise in deciding whether it's a consistency, inconsistent with the master plan or not? Are they looking for other comments, or any other recommendations the board has?
Well, nothing should prevent us from making other comments, so...
Right, right.
I have, I have the following thought, which may be only mine, but we throw it out anyway. So I happen to really like the idea, I happen to really like the ordinance, and I agree completely that as a process, this is the way to do it, and bring in stakeholders, and it's how we did it in the Attorney General's office, putting out, you know, Attorney General directives, and so I commend the group that put it together. I was just wondering if, you know, let me say it this way. When I was reading this over, I had sort of a thought experiment, where I said, imagine that there's a town in New Jersey with a highly desirable school district, where people clamor to get into that town and have kids in the school district. And all of a sudden, you snap your fingers, and there were 1,000 or 1,500 of these ADUs in that hypothetical New Jersey town with a really desirable school district. Who do you think would fill those units, and what would the impact be on this hypothetical town? And so what I thought about when I was reading this is, might the council want to put in the ordinance that after the first, pick a number of ADUs or build 100, you know, pick any number you want, that the council would reauthorize? Not cut it off, but put it up for reauthorization? Because I have no idea who's going to come live in these ADUs and our, I mean, if it's seniors, it's one thing, if it's, if it's school-aged kids, it's another, and I'm just kind of curious.
Can I, can I comment a little bit on that?
Sure.
So there are two places in New Jersey that have ADUs already, as, you know, that I know of, they're similar towns to Montclair, which would be Princeton and Maplewood. And I tried to get Maplewood to respond to me, but they didn't get back to me. But Princeton, in the two years they've had this ordinance, has only had 18 ADUs built. And that's a place I think describes, you know, fits your description of a good school system, et cetera. The other thing is, I think it only allows for three people to live in the ADU, so that's also a limiting, a limiting factor.
Not that much.
Oh, well, you know, yeah, yeah.
We're not having a family of five move in, right? It's going to be either one parent, two kids, or two parents and one kid, I mean, that's the maximum, right?
We're saying, we're saying the same things, I just, I just think, and if it's 18, then it's never going to matter. On the other hand, I mean, I think Montclair, I think the demand for these is, as a push and a pull, could be quite significant. I think that there are going to be homeowners who would like the income, I think there's going to be plenty of demand for the units where desirable...
But they're expensive, you know, you can see if you looked at the...
And you need dedicated parking off-street, at least one spot, right? So it does restrict where, you know, how many of these can be built.
As I say, I'm 100% for this, I just, if it were me and I were making the decision, I would, I would want to, as a council, I would want to have a little bit of a trigger in here after you hit a certain number of units, to take a look at it again. And if nobody agrees with me, that's fine, too, but that was the only thought I had about this, is that it could end up being a very successful program, and that would be a desirable thing right until it isn't, and...
And they can always go back to it.
Exactly. I think one of the benefits is, we have a requirement that they be, that they annually get certified.
Recertified, yeah.
That they, that they're meeting the requirements, so we'll be able to monitor these on an annual basis and determine, you know, who's living in the units.
But to your point, I mean, it is true that the, if you have a big house that's built a little ADU, the elderly parent can live in the ADU, and the couple, their children with five of their own children, grandchildren could live in the big house. So it's a possibility that it could have an effect on the school system, which is what you were driving at, yeah.
Are there, if somebody then, other than a family member is not living there, are there actual, is there something in here, because I didn't see it, that that family or that those people have to have a lease, a lease agreement?
Six months, yeah, it's in there.
But like a signed lease?
It says a minimum lease of six months in the...
But it's an actual lease?
That's what it says.
That has to be, I didn't see that.
I thought I saw six...
Because I will say one thing...
It says they're trying to, for it not to be an Airbnb, which is why they...
Right.
But also getting back to what Jeff said, in order to register into the Montclair Public Schools, you have to have a lease, a current lease. You have to have three proofs of mail with your last name and your address on it, in order to register on the Montclair Public School.
Well, that would be between the owner and the renter, too.
Yeah, I was going to say, some of these units may not have leases, it's, that's a decision between the owner and the renter.
So there's no lease?
No requirement in this, I don't think.
So what is it?
I think if there's a lease, it has to be at least six months. But I think that if you have a, if you have, I mean, I think you're not going, it's not, there doesn't seem to be a...
There seems to be a requirement in here that if you let mom move in, mom's got to have a lease agreement.
Exactly. Other than immediate family.
Right, but if it's somebody that's not immediate family, then it would have, then one assumes it would be a lease, and it would then be subject to the six-month thing. I, yeah, I mean, I, I'm a small C conservative, and I like to kind of do things, I like to see how things go before I dive all the way in, but you know...
But leases protect not only the leasers, the leasor, yeah, I don't know.
Both parties.
Both parties.
Yes.
They protect everybody, and it's also, you need that for insurance, I would think, if you're going to, you know, your homeowner's insurance, and...
I think, I think the idea was that there, if you, you can have a lease, but not necess, if you have a caregiver who's, that's part of their pay, that they provide housing, you may not have a lease with that. Or if you're providing it for your children, you may not necessarily have a lease with them.
Okay, all right, I'm just, the other thing is code enforcement.
Right.
So is there any, you said there's about 18 of these in Princeton, which...
Very few in two years.
But that's a whole other level of code enforcement that the town would have to incur, do we...
Our code enforcement officers do this every day. You know, they're, they're, they inspect housing units, and this is what they would, when they're created, they would need to inspect them, so...
And we have enough manpower, woman power for that, do you think?
You know, it'd be a wonderful problem to have, if all of a sudden we had all these ADUs being built. Because Carmel's right, there were only 18 in Princeton, and I did reach out to Maplewood last year, and at that point, they only had two.
Yeah.
You know, their ordinance has only been in place for maybe, they're in year three, and I spoke to the woman who's in charge of it, I think it was a year ago, and at that point, she'd had two applications. So they're not, you know, there's not a huge demand for them.
Yeah, I mean, especially you think about, I mean, we almost know what construction costs these days, these are expensive to build, you really have to be committed to it, so, I don't know.
Not in your attic.
No, no, not if you're attic or your basement, but if you're building a, you're converting your garage, your attic.
These look like dollhouses.
Yeah, tiny houses, yeah.
But can we clarify something, can we clarify something? Under Section D standards, subsection 13 says, I'm sorry, subsection 12, it says, "A minimum rental term of six months is required in ADUs," right? So what do we mean that if to have an ADU, you don't need a lease agreement?
My interpretation was that there would be a minimum, because you don't want the month-to-month lease, you don't want, yeah. That's how I interpreted that, minimum term.
Right, so how is it not a lease? Are we saying, how are we saying, what do we mean that we don't need a lease for it to qualify as an ADU?
Unless it's ownership.
You know what?
Unless it's what?
That was a last-minute put-in by the council, which is why...
We originally started off with a statement, no short-term rentals.
And we defined as an Airbnb.
And then it became the six... So that's a good question that we really didn't anticipate.
Right, well, the group didn't anticipate. There were a couple of things that came in at the last minute that were not, the group was not consulted with.
So grandma doesn't need a lease, right? You know? Or it's not a real ADU, right?
Because it doesn't specify who the resident is.
It doesn't specify, so you need it to qualify. The inspector has to come and say...
But it also doesn't define what it means to have a rental term, because that could be, there could be an intention to remain for six months, which could in theory qualify as a term, right? Does that need to be written down? No.
If you want to prove six months, it better be written down.
Yeah, and if you want the inspector...
It's in your best interest.
No, no, but there's an inspector, this has, there's an inspector, and if you don't have an agreement proving the six months, it doesn't qualify.
It doesn't say written.
I guess you could have an oral agreement, but you better prove it to the inspector somehow, I mean...
Grandma, did I tell you to say?
Both parties say we have to agree.
That's right. It's a very good point, and I think we should include that in the report to the, to the council.
Okay, to clarify the lease term, and do family members need it? Immediate family?
Right. So you're going to enforce that six-month requirement.
And while we're talking details like that, if I put my editing hat on, sub item 10, about utilizing the same exterior materials and colors, and I don't know how you would write this, but what if it's a complementary material color?
Yeah, that's a good point, too.
Because I can say, you know, across the street, my neighbor's had a, you know, her house, the main part is 100 years old, it's all red brick, they had an addition that was there, when I moved in, it was painted red, so it was a similar color, and then recently, they painted it gray, and it looks awesome. It's not the same color, it's very complementary, and I think it looks nice.
So I think a good change would just to be utilize complementary exterior, just get rid of the same.
Is that something that we can enforce, I guess?
No, I think that's good, I think...
Okay. And then my other editing question was a page before that, when we get to, we're at D, 1D standards, and I'll paraphrase this quickly. Only one ADU shall be permitted if the zoning officer finds that the following conditions have been met. So is there a case where two ADUs could be permitted if those conditions aren't met?
No, I think somewhere it says one per, one per property outside.
Well, but that's one of those subconditions. So if I can say, well, I already have two, so I don't meet those, I'm just, this is kind of just playing, you know, playing with the words, and if somebody were really looking at this, could I say, well, I don't have those subconditions, I have two, so you have to grant it for me?
So maybe if we just said, got rid of the word "only," and just said, "One ADU shall be permitted on a lot..."
And the following are conditions of the ADU.
If the, if the following, yes.
No, I would just, I would break it up. One ADU shall be permitted on a lot located in the following zones. The zoning officer, you know, in order to permit that, in order for the zoning officer to approve such ADU, the following conditions must be met.
The zoning officer must find that the following conditions have been met.
Something to that effect, to avoid somebody interpreting this differently than what we're all intending or seeming to intend here tonight.
I have a few comments, do you mind if I, from the top. I think most people in Montclair do not know that this has been worked on, if you live in a single, I've tested it out with 20 friends of mine or so. I said, really? Anyone can just go like builds in their backyard? So I think generally that this should have a lot more input from the public. I know that committees have met and so forth, but I think that there should be a broader discussion of converting single-family residences into two-family residences. That's, again, that's probably not our purview here, but I think that there should be more awareness that this is happening. I think it's, I think a lot of this discussion has happened with people who have, who promote this, and think it's a good idea, so that's a general comment.
Just to your point, the subcommittee had hoped to have educational meetings for the public, but it didn't happen.
So I think generally, because I, again, no one knows what's going on, they're saying, what could happen?
But the senior citizen groups have promoted it within their constituency.
Okay, the other thing is that with respect to the master plan, ADUs never mention the master plan. It never comes up in the master plan. Affordable housing does, senior housing and so forth, but the presumption is in the master plan that the Montclair needs to create affordable housing. These AD unit, ADU units have no affordable restrictions. These are market rate units that you're proposing to put on the market that would theoretically satisfy affordable housing. So I think that's a disconnect with respect to the master plan.
That's also, there is an exception there, which was also put in at the last minute, and that is, they added two- and three-family houses. And the problem is, if you have a three-family house that builds an ADU, what the powers that be have said, then rent control should apply to it.
Well, they said that it's going to count as a four-family house.
It'll make it a four-family, and rent control will apply.
In which case, rent control does apply to it.
And that's a problem.
Taps over to rent.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what they said in this document.
Right, so that, so that is the affordability element.
My only point is that we're, you know, if someone spends $200,000 to build a nice apartment to get income from, it's going to be, they'll max out that rent, so I don't think it's going to solve an affordable housing problem.
That's not what it was made for, no. It was not originally, it was originally for seniors.
But Tony, wouldn't you think the smaller units would naturally, like the market forces would push the pricing down, right? Because it's not going to be, it's only 800 square feet max, right?
Well, you could build a, you could build a two-bedroom at 800 square feet.
Without a doubt, I mean, I know in Hoboken, Hoboken, they have 700 feet, two bedrooms in the...
My only point is that, my only point is that whatever the rent is, it will be marketed, it will not be a discounted rent. So there's no, there's no connection to the need for affordable housing by building market rate, whatever, whatever it should be.
I mean, there is, right? You increase supply, and you're going to have market pressures that help either alleviate otherwise rising rents, or contribute to a decline in rents, because there's more opportunities to rent.
Marginally, okay.
And it's a small unit.
So it's not going to command the same as a Seymour Street apartment?
So it's going to be at the lower end of the bar, bar scale. You live in less space, you'll pay less for it.
Right, no, I don't, I don't...
But there are several places in the master plan that while they don't talk about this being affordable housing, it is referenced as something that is a goal of the master plan, and I can, you know, make the citations, yeah.
No, I get that, I'll just get through my comments, I'm not, I think that we have to, the presumption is that these are rental, there's no, I know in Princeton, a friend of mine wrote the code for Princeton, and the first lawsuit they had was that a builder came in, built a house, condoed it, built a $1.5 million house in an $800,000 ADU. They were sued, they were sued, and the builder won, so I think that we...
No, I think they settled in that case.
No, they did settle, and I think...
They settled, they didn't...
The issue was, the builder wanted to have that ADU be able to be sold separately.
It was.
It was.
Well, it was, okay, and that...
The town in Princeton amended their ordinance to allow them to sell those...
So we don't have that, but the problem is, do we have precedent law that would say that you...
There is no precedent law, because it's settled, okay.
Well, my point is that this ordinance, oh, here, I have another macro. We have a zoning committee, this is new zoning, we should have a zoning committee meet with the ZBA who really knows, let me give you one example, the side setback for a house is six feet, it's 28 feet for an ADU. I guarantee you, people are going to come in with ADU saying, well, why do I have to set my ADU back 28 feet when my house is six feet? The zoning board is going to have some input in that, so I think having our zoning committee meet jointly with the ZBA would be good to review a zoning ordinance. I think that's a, that's why, that's why the committee exists. Because we're, you know, because I think those details, they know it...
I don't disagree, but that's not necessarily what, what we need to do tonight to review this.
But aren't, isn't this going back to be voted on as law?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if there's tweaks that this committee could make, wouldn't you want to do that prior?
This is due November 29.
Is there comments to what was already passed?
Comments are due November 29.
But they could tweak it, right? So, I mean, it's worth, I think it makes sense to...
But I think if we're reviewing a zoning ordinance, the zoning committee should have had an opportunity to meet and do its job.
That makes sense, yeah.
I don't disagree with that.
So perhaps the zoning...
With the ZBA, I think the ZBA is, you know, those members are so skilled, I think it'd be great to do that. So that was just sort of a macro thing. Also, back, this doesn't eliminate for-sale housing, it doesn't eliminate the ability for little condos to happen over town, so I think that we should sort of think about what the ramifications are.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Yeah, what do you mean?
Well, the property, when, the property can't be subdivided to, so that builder in Princeton had two units to sell, it became a condo. One lot, two homes, instead of a condo association, and subverted, and sold an $800,000 ADU, which was not the intent of purpose. He scraped the, he scraped the original house.
I think what he, I think what would prevent that here is that it has to be owner occupied.
Well, then the owner would buy the house and live in, you know, live in the big one or live in the ADU.
It sounds like maybe what a recommendation could be is that they write into this that we recommend, that the council writes into it, that, you know, condos are not allowed.
And I don't know if you can...
And the ADU can't be sold independently of the house. That's what it says in the ordinance.
Yeah, and I don't, and I don't know if we can write, because I, my understanding is that zoning can't dictate ownership.
Yeah, that was the basis of the suit, actually.
Well, but the fellow who, there is, I was saying, this one case, I don't know much about it, but that's exactly what happened in Princeton, and the builder won.
Because they settled, yeah.
So all I'm saying, I would just bring this out, I don't know all the legal ramifications, but if that's the case, if that were to happen, it would be good if we sort of understand if those sorts of things could happen here. That's all I'm saying.
I mean, if, it's a good, and I was thinking about that, because we do have houses, like four-family houses, where they separate them and make it a four-family condo. It looks the same, it's just that they created a homeowners' association, and so at the end of the day, it still, it still looks the same and functions the same.
Well, let me, let me try to rephrase Tony's quite astute question into something that we can, we can put back. It, because...
I'm glad you're here.
Well, no, because, because, so the ordinance does purport to say, purport to require that the ADU can't be sold independent of the house. The question that should be put to the council and to the township attorney, how sure are we that that ordinance is enforceable? Because if it's, if there's doubt about its enforceability, then we could end up in a situation where the ADU is sold separately from the houses. You know, we don't want to be sued the way Princeton was sued, because it would, it would be suboptimal, I think, if the ADU were to be able to be sold. So I think it would be worth having the township attorney opine on whether we think that that provision of the ordinance is going to stick, because if it isn't, then that's material to the...
I know, I know that they're aware of the issue. We did have a discussion, and in the discussion, they didn't think it was applicable to Montclair.
The carriage house has never been able to be sold separately, has it?
The which house?
A carriage house. A house, there are houses that have a carriage house from the old days.
Sometimes they've carved out the carriage house on separate lots.
Yeah, it's done.
It's done.
Well, that's a subdivision.
Sometimes they're, they're combined again, so.
Yeah, I think that these lots upon which they've been built probably wouldn't be able to be subdivided because they're very small.
Yeah, I don't think this would be, but I don't think it could be subdivided, but it could probably be condoed, and that's the question of, and maybe you know, Jacob, can you zone and say, no, you, you can't condoize a.
My understanding is state condo law kind of overrides municipal.
Yeah.
You can kind of do an end run around municipal law if you want to condoize something, assuming you can meet the qualifications of state condo law.
Can we require a lease between both occupants? You know, the primary house and the ADU? Can we, can we make grandma sign a lease?
Leave her all your money.
I'm, I'm curious, I mean, because, I mean, theoretically it could be very.
You've got three attorneys here, so $10 a year.
Yeah, $10 a year. I mean, it could be very simple. It doesn't have to be a long drawn out process, but is that a way to try to avoid this situation by making that one provision a little bit more clear and a little bit more affirmative that a lease shall be between the two parties?
Clearly you didn't know my grandmother.
No, no, I did that.
$10? I wanted to give it to her doll.
I think $10 is the new standard, that's what I've seen a lot lately. Can't do a dollar agreement anymore.
Inflation, man.
I know. But I think it's, it's.
I think it's, yeah, it's a good.
It's a good question, it's a good.
It is, that's, yeah.
We were avoiding it.
I think it's something that we should put into the report to the, what I'm gathering here is that perhaps between now and our meeting on the 17th, the zoning subcommittee should try to meet. I know it's going to be really tough to schedule a meeting, but maybe we could do it during Zoom.
What is 17th?
That's the next planning board meeting.
The next planning board meeting.
Oh, okay.
And this is due on a, we have to get our report to them by September, November 29.
Wait, the 17th?
The 17th or the 21st?
17th, it's got to be the 21st.
Is that set in stone?
Correct.
It's 35 days, right?
Oh, 30, oh, 35 days.
The planning board has 35 days, which is November 29th, to review the ordinance.
Okay.
So we meet again.
The 21st.
Oh, I said the 21st, yes.
Okay.
So with the zoning committee.
Did I say 17th?
Yeah, not the 21st.
We enjoy a good chat.
Okay, and then have the, and we'll see if we'll get the, the board of adjustment involved and report back to the planning board.
Yeah, let's even do it on Zoom, so we don't have to, you know, drag everyone in.
For, for the zoning subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, for the committee meeting, yeah.
He's wanting to be clear.
Yeah.
So who's on, who's on the, you, me?
Myself and you.
Oh, the three, three are zoning, and you and me and Kevin.
I have, zoning is, Carol, Carmel and Tony, and then redevelopment is Carmel, Tony and Kevin.
I think I'm busy today.
You guys are going to be busy.
Yeah.
And we haven't been busy in a long time.
That's true.
And one, one more thing, I, I mean, I know, you know, Janice, I brought this up too, if you, if you have an ADU on a three family house and it becomes a four family, therefore subject to rent control, I had thought that there's prohibition about applying rent control to new construction.
I sent that again to the town.
So we're having, just, you know, for the record here, so we're having the town attorney with that.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah, yes, right, so it would be new construction, so rent control may not apply to it.
Right.
We're having an opinion of our council.
Can I ask, practically speaking, about this three person maximum, if a couple with a child has another kid, are they then forced to vacate? Like, seriously?
We're going to have the ADU police go out.
I'm, but seriously, they have to have it inspected every year, right? So.
Well, they have to submit a certification.
Right.
So I, I assume that, I don't know, I think if they're, well.
Seems a little harsh, I'm just saying.
Right.
But is there a way to soften, soften that sub, subsection two?
We did have four when it was cut down to three.
It is from four to three, you may have to.
It happens, and it's actually, it's not unheard, it's not unreasonable to have four people in 800 square foot unit. It happens in Manhattan all the time.
Could you structure it where it says at the time of the initiation of the, the rental term, it is a maximum of three people, and then what happens from there?
That's a very good point, yeah.
Yeah.
And that goes to the recommendation that they have a lease.
Yes.
And at the beginning of the lease.
Because you can't kick a family out because they had a kid, right? I mean, that's just absurd.
Tonight's your night, Mr. Jacobson.
Okay, why can't we kick them out?
No, 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 I was going to say that there's the, there's the problem identified by Mr. Graham, which is, which is the natural evolution of a family, and then there's the solution proposed by Mr. Niemann, which I definitely didn't like, which is just have three people sign the lease and then anything, you know, then you can run the orphanage from, from, you know, Annie. You know, that's, that's no good, so.
I mean, there's natural, you have four people in 800 square feet, you've got 200 square foot a person. That's cozy. There are people who are more than able and willing to do that, right? But there's a natural limit to what's, people are going to be comfortably living in, and if they're exceeding that, that just is evidence of our affordable housing problem that they're willing to live with five people in 800 square feet.
Clearly we're a middle class town here, lots of people live in 800 square feet with three kids.
Yeah.
Like growing up.
Yeah, I mean, if it were me, I think that I would kind of apply the rule of reason to this and say that, all right, you know, if at a time they sign the six month minimum lease, they're three, and then in due course they become four.
They have twins.
I think, I think, you know, the reality is that when the lease is up, they got to find other housing. I mean, I think that if we're, if we're limiting it to three and there's a reason for it, doesn't mean they can't have four for the period of the lease because there's a baby, but then.
Well, I wouldn't go that far, that's a bit harsh from me.
Oh, but that's.
I think that if, I would say that if they, when, at the time they got the lease, maybe it was two years ago, if they, it's not, if they're only renewing a lease, that that would be permitted. I wouldn't throw them out just because they didn't have a lease.
You know, but that's, look, I think, I think if, if there's a limit, there's a limit, and that's, you know, that right now, the way this ordinance is, is drafted, there's a limit. And it seems like that limit was the product of compromise and not a lot of thought.
I mean, I think that the purpose was clearly to reduce overcrowding in our, in our residential areas.
I don't know that that was the only purpose. I think, because I.
Also, schools, you're thinking, were.
I think so. I mean, look, there's, look, I, I don't mean to be a one note Johnny on this, I mean, you know, but the point is that if this is supposed to be seniors, then three is enough.
But it's not just supposed to be seniors now.
I understand that, I understand that, but if it's not just supposed to be seniors and it's, and it's going to be young, you know, young, small families, we're limiting, you know, somebody made a decision to limit it to three, and I can understand the reasons for that, and I don't, you know, I think that if we're kind of looking at it as the planning board, I don't know that we want to, we want to suggest upending what seems to have been a thought out compromise.
But I think we could ask them to consider what, if there is language that can be inserted to protect a growing family. I mean, I understand your point, you don't want to run little, you know, the orphanage out of there, I get that, I get that. But if you're expanding to two or three kids, do we really want to put that family out in a position of having to go uproot themselves and go somewhere? I, I, I don't, I don't know, maybe that's something that should be reconsidered. But no, it is, but maybe that's something that should be discussed, we're, we're supposed to determine whether this fits the master plan and also make comments for them to consider. I think maybe that should be a reasonable discussion point.
To what extent, Jeff, do you think the anti eviction statute plays a role here?
Well, it's a fair question too. I mean, the, the, there's a lease, I mean, what, I mean, here's the thing, is that, is that they would be signing leases that are subject to the town's law, and so the lease would be, why, well, why not?
Anti evictions is a state statute.
Right, but they're, but the, but the lease has a term, and the conditions of the, the conditions of the lease are subject to the, I mean, you're saying, you're saying that, what, the evic, the anti eviction law prevents you from not renew, well, right, because you're, no, they're not entitled to renew, they're not entitled to renew.
It takes, people come to me and they say, you know, I got this tenant in my property, the lease is expired, I want to get him out, and there's no real statutory basis for getting them out. You have to, you have to be, create a, a problem, you have to not pay the rent, but apart from those statutory bases, there's not a whole hell of a lot. You can't get people out of their homes.
But Art, can I, do those rules just apply to a certain number of units and above? I wouldn't imagine that those rules apply to owner occupied houses. That's a different story.
No, but he's, no, he's, he's got a, I, I'm, the wheels are spinning, because you've got, you've got a very good thought, but I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to play this out in the real world. So you're correct that the sheriff would not come at the behest of the homeowner saying they've got to go because there's now four instead of three. What I'm, what I'm wondering though is, and this goes back to something that Janice said earlier, is that they need, this needs to be certified, and so the question becomes, what happens if the town finds out that it's not three anymore? And then what is the consequence on the town's approval of the ADU if the homeowner is not following the ordinance? Then the fine kicks in, because that's what, I mean, the ordinance has written that if, that, that there's a fine on the homeowner, so the homeowner would be subject to the fine, but I'm not sure what else, not sure what other consequence there would be. Because you're right, they wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily be able to come and remove the tenants, but the homeowner would no longer be in compliance with the ADU ordinance and the fines would kick in.
Yeah, but then the homeowner is between a rock and a hard place.
No disagreement, but what else is new?
But hold on.
We put it, we stick it to homeowners every, every which way in this town.
Yeah, we do. But Art, could you make a comment about as it written now? Is it enforceable that it can only be three people?
I'm sorry, Carol, I can't hear you.
She asked if it's enforceable that it could only be three people?
It's.
Is that, is that an enforceable term?
Honestly, I'm not that familiar with the anti eviction statute. You really have to, to read through it and understand it, but I can't answer your question.
But again, but again, we're talking about two different things, because Art is, is quite correctly talking about what would, would, you know, first of all, I can't envision a set of circumstances in which the governing body of Montclair would actually say, you know, you know, walk up and say, you out of here, thank you for having that baby, you're gone. That, that's, the, the issue is that the ordinance is drafted, that the homeowner would not be in compliance with the ADU ordinance, and the homeowner would then be subject to fines, as unfair as that might be, because the homeowner can't do anything about it.
Wait, but the homeowner could also, I, I think based on this ordinance, have a legal action to evict, right?
The, well, that's, I mean, the.
That's what we're questioning, I understand that.
That's why I asked for Art to make a comment.
Art is right, that the, that the town ordinance is not going to.
Supercede.
Supercede the, you know, it's not going to, it's not going to give the homeowner enough of a basis to actually remove a tenant that doesn't want to leave.
Right, and we don't know that to enough degree of certainty where perhaps maybe some refining language might be.
I think, I think, look, I think what we're, what, what, I mean, we, we are a, we are a group of smart people who are seeing this for the first time after a multi-year process where certain people were looking at it and doing all the things that you do. And we're raising issues that they may or may not have considered. I think it's appropriate for us to, in the report that we're putting together, say that these issues came up at the planning board. We don't know the, you know, we don't know the answers, we, we have a really great attorney who didn't know the answers, we have other attorneys on the board who didn't know the answers, and we, we think it's worth letting you know what the discussion was and do with it what you will.
Agreed. Yep, absolutely.
Sorry, Jess, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I just want to say, I know that the ordinance says that the certificate, if they don't meet the conditions, then their certificate of occupancy is revoked, they no longer have the, are entitled to that accessory dwelling unit, so, and then the fines take place, but the question is how do you remove?
And that, yeah, that doesn't, I mean, that, that does not, it does not entitle you to evict, evict their homeowner, the tenants.
It doesn't give them the ability to sell the house with that accessory dwelling unit.
Right, but it puts the owner in that rock and hard place.
But isn't that true for any small property owner, that they have the same problem? This doesn't make it any different.
But maybe we should come up, present it so that maybe the, they can, the council can come up with this own, a solution that's equitable.
Because this is, this is a new one. I mean, I don't, I don't, to my knowledge, there is not another, there's not another ordinance that proposes to tell a landlord the number of people that can live in the, live in the unit, and so this is, and this is a new one.
Such ordinance, death, ordinances definitely exist in other communities at least, because there's a longstanding history of like only allowing two women to live together, or anything else above is from like the 1800s.
No, we do have a.
So there are definitely, there are definitely ordinances on that, so there must be.
But those are, those are public health. This is, this is different, yeah.
I mean, would, then what's the basis for this limit, right? You, you would in theory then have a public health limit, and maybe that's the angle in which you do enforcement.
I, look, I think, I don't know this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just throwing that into the ether.
My suspicion is that this three limit was set for reasons other than public health.
Yeah, just public acceptance of the ordinance, more or less, yeah. So you don't have, you know, you don't have eight people in an 800 accessory unit.
Overcrowding schools, right? That was probably.
And also, I think to differentiate an ADU from a two family, for instance, and also trying to encourage it to be seniors. I mean, I think that there were, there were probably a lot of reasons for it, but I, but not public health.
Yeah, and regardless, I think you nailed it though, Jeff, but I think you nailed it.
Maybe they should change their explanation.
That didn't come up.
I think we should just point out, you know, what could be a practical result of this and let the council deal with it, you know, so.
I think that's a very good, I agree.
Yeah, I think you nailed it with that, so, yeah.
I've got a note on section D, number 13, the, the requirement for one off street parking space. There's been concerns about costs, setting aside land for parking is a cost at a fundamental level. If we want these to be affordable housing, we need to limit those costs. There's plenty of rules regulating parking in Montclair, and I don't know that forcing property owners to add another parking space is necessary. Someone who wants to park their car will either seek out a unit that enables them to park their car or be responsible for finding legal parking elsewhere. There's plenty of opportunities to do so, and, you know, if that requires them taking on some cost, great, we should not be forcing those, especially if they're seniors who are not comfortable driving, or those in sections of town where a parking space is harder to get from your lot, especially if you're working around the 40% limit on size, you know. I just think it's an unnecessary cost. Plenty of houses with enough land to put an ADU are going to have that space, and it's an attractive amenity to offer. Let them offer it, don't force someone who doesn't need it or doesn't want it, don't force them to offer it.
But there are a lot of residential areas that have no street parking and they don't have garage, I'm thinking especially in upper Montclair, right? So are we now like excluding upper Montclair from?
No, because they can still give up a parking space on their driveway for it, we're just not making them.
But if you don't, if, it's, it's what I think the chairman usually says here, you can have this ADU if you can park it, right? It's, it's, you better be able to have this extra spot for these three people, or you're going to cause either, you know, a problem in the street, you're going to have a problem where you're excluding certain neighborhoods from being able to do this.
By eliminating a requirement?
Yeah, I think so. Am I?
No, because.
Am I misunderstanding the?
Well, they, you can't park on the street.
You can't park on the street.
Right, so, yeah.
And, yeah. So they either offer the parking from their driveway if they so choose to, which, this is not suddenly enabling them to offer a parking space, right? It's saying they have to set one aside, rather than allowing them to offer that as an amenity to the accessory dwelling unit.
I think that's a very good point. I mean, I, I mean, because, I mean, hypothesize for a minute that somebody wants to have an ADU, but they don't have a parking space. And imagine, imagine you have a willing tenant who pays $100 to have a spot in Bay Street where they can park overnight if they want to, and you've got a willing, you know, willing buyer and a willing seller, and they want to do that transaction, but the spot's not on the, you know, not on the, on scene, I mean, I don't, I don't. not on the, on scene. I mean, I don't, I don't see-
Or the ADU is being used by a senior who can't drive anymore, because they no longer can drive.
And why is that?
Or by somebody, or by somebody who can walk to work, who's working in town. I mean, there's, there's a lot of-
Because we're thinking of the subsequent tenant, right? We're thinking of the subsequent tenant who may need to drive, right? You don't want to-
Yeah, all of this, all of this goes to, all the parking requirements. I mean, people in Montclair constantly complain about parking.
Yeah.
Parking requirements go with the unit. They don't go to the people, because just as your point, that person moves out, the next person, so housing needs to provide, I mean, one parking space or 800 feet, you have to provide it.
But why does it need to provide it, right? Like-
Well, then why have parking in Lacawanna Plaza? Why have parking anywhere?
I mean, we can have that conversation, but-
This is not Lacawanna Plaza.
But the point is that if you're providing housing, it's proper from a zoning standpoint and a use standpoint to provide a parking space for that. That's a, that's a resi standard.
I, I, continue.
Yeah.
No, I mean, in Montclair, though, it's clearly also an amenity, right? There are plenty of parts of town where parking is not something that comes with your unit, and so you either need an on-street parking.
And for years, they were given reduced parking, and it gummed up our lots with permit spaces and took spaces away from businesses that could use the units. Our lots were filled with permit spaces because all those buildings didn't have adequate parking, historically, and all. So it became a cost, it did become a cost to the town. It prevented other things from happening in town.
Because the town chose to subsidize those spots in the, in the municipal decks, right? Like, that was a policy choice they made, and they've gone back on that policy choice. But now, instead of the town subsidizing the decks, right, we're having the tenants who do not drive cars subsidize all these parking spots for a theoretical future tenant who's going to rent this unit, presumably well aware that they do not get a parking spot, right? And so they're renting it, saying, "I know I'm not getting parking, but now I, you know, like-"
But that's now a policy choice, to Tony's point. Now, I gotta go find parking somewhere else. He's gonna take a spot, that's gonna take a spot for potentially something else, causing more traffic, you know, more parking problems in town, right?
Maybe what South Orange, Princeton, they put parking in. And, you know, maybe, they're not as smart as, as we are, but I just, I think if you're creating dwelling, it's good policy to provide parking for that dwelling. If it's not used, it's not used. It's a, fundamentally, it's a, I mean, and also, this impervious service will kick in, you know, our new 250 square foot. The house will be neat, you know, neat, whatever runoff is coming out from the new ADUs can be caught, and so the parking space as well, because presumably it'd be, if it's not pervious, it could be caught. So I don't really see an impact in doing that.
Which then, but that then makes it even more difficult to implement this ordinance in multiple places, because you're now running up on further possible constraints on having an ADU. So now you no longer, now you, you're limited on size, which is fair. So on a smaller lot, you not only are limited on that size, you're limited on the impervious coverage. Like, we're layering on regulations that, in practice, encroach on the ability to put this ADU. And the, the ordinance is far broader than the township's previous ordinance in order to encourage ADUs, but there's still significant constriction. And by putting parking spaces everywhere, right, you're providing parking, which is a, a, a good thing, but you're also encouraging people to drive and have a car and use a car, when otherwise, they may not make that choice. Someone living in an environment where they get a free parking spot, right, may choose a car, to have a car, even though 95% of what they do, they don't need that car.
I was with you right until then.
I'm surprised I had you that long, Jeff.
No, I mean, look, I see, I see, I see both sides of this. I mean, you know, we do require, you know, when people are building big condo units, we require them to have parking. But I think that these are, these ADUs are, you know, the A is accessory. I mean, that's the whole point. And so I, I think that a lot of people will provide parking spaces. I don't know that it's, it's necess, I don't know that it's necessary. And I think that, that if we didn't have it as a requirement, we might end up with more of these, and it might go to the intended use, which is seniors who are, you know, not driving themselves. So I, I, I think, I think that there's, there is merit in the, in, in putting this in our list of things that we talked about, but I also don't know that I would go so far as to say that we recommend taking it out, but I think that we, we raised it as an issue. Because Tony's, Tony's not wrong. I mean, but, but neither are you wrong that, that if we have it as a requirement, it's going to be a disincentive in places where we might not want to create the disincentive.
Can I ask a question? I guess they, the person who could, could apply for variance.
That was gonna be my question. Since this is in the zoning code, they could apply to the zoning board of adjustment for a variance.
Exactly.
But then they'd be-
Which is a cost and-
Well, but they'd also, they'd be applying for it for tenant A, and then it's, it's there forever, and then, you know, then some people are going to have exceptions where they don't need to have parking, and everybody else does.
But they have to justify it, right, if they're going for a variance.
But they're only justifying it based on the tenant that they have. You know, I don't, I don't need a parking space because it's my mom.
But it isn't because of the tenant, or is it because I'm right next to a train station, and there's tons of parking here? You know, it would probably be something like that, right? More along that lines?
I think that the Board of Adjustment knows that tenants, tendencies change.
Yeah.
And usually, the justification has to do something with the, the land and the location of the property. So, case by case.
I think it's an interesting question.
You know, somebody said to me, so, I, on my block where I live, there are 11 houses. And so I was talking about this with my neighbor, and she said to me, and we all have long driveways. You could fit a lot of cars in our driveways. So with 11 cars, if we each did this, it would add 22 cars, I'm sorry, it would add 11 cars to our street, and 11 more cars into the stream of traffic flow in our town, and we're just one little street of 11 houses.
Right.
It's, it's, um, she wasn't all that excited about this, um-
I'm gonna take the under, though. Fewer than 11 houses on your block are gonna do this.
Yeah, that's absolutely true.
But it is possible. We all have big garages all the way in the back of our houses. It's, it is possible. And, you know, it's, she wasn't all that happy about it. You know, it's-
Well, that's part of the reason why I was thinking, you know, pick a number and then we reauthorize. But that's, you know, that, it's, there's a lot of reasons why there could be, you know, it, it could be 18 like Princeton, or it could be a lot more.
Yeah.
I don't know. There's, there's certainly a demand for this in Montclair. It's-
But I think it's worth putting your recommendation to pick a number. Say, you know, a board member recommended picking a number and then reevaluating after X number of units. That's a perfectly reasonable suggestion to put in to the recommendations.
And I think this kind of gets to one other thing that I was thinking about. I didn't want to belabor this point for too long here, but, you know, when I was looking at the master plan, land use and circulation element, one thing that came to mind was the circulation piece, right? We're having maybe more seniors, more families live in some of these units. Maybe they have a parking spot, maybe they don't. But just as we're putting a lot of attention over years to this housing side of things and the land use, I think we now need to start turning more towards the circulation side. Because as our master plan talks about, is having more intra-t township options, you know, like a jitney service that would connect to some of these other more inter-municipality, municipal transportation options. And so I just, I think that's another thing that we need to start looking at, whether it's we as a planning board, or as the council, or whomever in the township, spend a little bit more time now to focus on that to account for what we hope is a fairly successful program here.
Very good.
Here, here. And one other small thing, section, or number eight on that offers a 5% increase in total maximum floor area for handicap accessible units. Is that like a standard rule? Is that just a number that was chosen? It feels a little low when handicapped accessible housing is so important, especially in a community with so many older homes.
Is there an ADA guide or anything?
Section D, number eight.
We took that as a sample from another ordinance. We put it in there. So it was, another town did it and thought it was a really good idea. So we tested it.
We had three, we looked at Maplewood, Princeton, and the AARP ordinance, and so we plucked stuff. A lot of them are very similar, quite honestly. So that was our model and our basis. Okay.
And I think, bear in mind, if any of these things, if they don't work, we can always change them and modify it.
Right.
And I think, again, I do think it'll be helpful, because with the annual recertification, it makes it much easier to monitor what's going on.
I, you know, I, it's, I take that point, I really do. I just think that when you're talking about political decisions, there's a big difference between putting something in and having it be authorized in perpetuity, and you have to take an affirmative step to change it versus-
Right.
-having a trigger built into the law that says, "All right, we're, we're going to-"
Reassess.
We're going, we're going to basically bind our successors to say, "Look, no, take another look at this and see what you think." And it does, it creates a different dynamic. It's, the council should consider whether it wants to have a, you know, a permanent reauthorization or whether it's something where they want to put a trigger in it.
And with all these questions-
Kind of like the examination report for the master plan, right? So are we looking at this like, you know, like we do, so.
But look at all the questions that we have right here. I'm being swayed more and more towards that position of an automatic trigger, but, it's reasonable.
I mean, it's a political choice. I mean, the council's got to decide whether it wants to- Well, that, well, sure, but the, but, but that's, you know, I, it's, I, I, like I said, as a, the small C conservative way to do this is to say, "Let's try it, and then let's, you know, then let's force a second look."
I think you may have some unintended consequences there, if there's a mad dash to make sure you get one of those ADU permits and then you sit on it.
Well, that'd be a high, that'd be a high-class problem.
Sure.
But I think they have to build something after they get the permit within, what, within a year? We did it one year. One year.
I mean, it, I actually was thinking about that, that it would be a high-class problem if we said, you know, "We're gonna do, we're gonna look at this after 100, and there's a mad dash to build 100 of these," which would be five times Princeton. I mean, that's not, that's, that, that may actually be a feature of my proposal, not a bug.
Okay.
All right. A lot of good dialogue on that. Thank you, everyone. Do we have any committee reports? Sounds like we will at the next couple of meetings.
Yeah. None for tonight.
None for tonight, okay. Next up is bills.
Can you get Bill's margin there, so I can, you know, move to adjourn?
There might have been. I reviewed the bills, and I would move to approve them. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.